You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you all to the Monday, October 8th Fayetteville City Council meeting. And at this time, we would ask that you would rise. We'll ask that Pastor Reginald Johnston from my father's house Christian church would give us the prayer, after which we'll be led into Pledge Allegiance by Cub Scout PAC
Let us pray. Father God, I come to you in prayer in the name of Jesus, thanking you, Lord, for this day, thanking you for this season, this meeting, Lord, thanking you for blessing this city and keeping us, Lord God, through the storm and through many hardships, Lord. I pray that your hand will be upon this city, this mayor, this council, Lord God, and I pray that you will give them your hand, Lord, that they will reach out to those who need to be touched. Let your eyes be upon this city, Lord God, and give them your eyes, that they will see things as you see them. Give them your perspective. Give them vision, Lord. I pray that they will know that their present decisions can impact future successes. Bless them, Lord God. Give them your mouth, Lord God. As you open your mouth wide and bless this city, I pray that they will speak the truth with love, with wisdom, with knowledge, and with understanding. Thank you for the blessing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Troop 746?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Johnston, we know you very well, but you want to tell us a little bit about your ministry and yourself?
Yes, sir. I'm the senior pastor of my father's house Christian church, right here in this great city of Fayetteville. And I think one of the exciting things about our ministry, we have an outreach ministry called Capital. And with Capital, we have some apartments where we pretty much house guys who get out of prison. We house them and help them to transition back into society. And we've been doing that since 2008 and been very much successful. And thank God for your help, Mr. Mayor, also for Councilman Crisp, and also Councilman Larry Wright. He's been real helpful in coming out and just getting into what we do. So we're just trying to do a little bit to help this community.
We appreciate what you do, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, at this time, after Hurricane Matthew, we found it very helpful to the citizens to have updates at the beginning of our council meetings. The same is true with Hurricane Florence. I know we have a lot of our citizens here tonight that were impacted by Hurricane Florence. We have many others who join us by way of television. We would ask that Deputy City Manager Jay Reinstein would come. He is our expert on hurricanes, and he would, apologies, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you for the promotion.
That he would update us on what's going on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight, I'm going to give you updates on our debris removal process, where we are with shelters, and also our Habitat Project, Bunce Road. With debris removal, our contractor Crowder Golf has nine trucks currently working, with another one arriving tomorrow. They're collecting vegetative debris at the curb that is not containerized. That's important. They're working in multiple areas of the city, concentrating on the areas with the heaviest tree canopy. And to date, 445.8 tons have already been collected. A lot of tonnage. City of Fayetteville trucks have also concentrated on containerized yard waste, completing one full pass of city routes, and have begun the second pass, and they hope to be back to normal schedules next week. Five limp trucks are now going to assist with the collection of non-containerized debris. And again, to date, containerized yard waste over 616 tons collected. City residents are asked to make sure that they have all storm debris to the curb ASAP and no later than October 22nd in order to facilitate collections in the most timely manner. Collections will continue after that date, but this allows for better identification of amounts that still need to be collected. We are asking that residents please separate the larger debris from small, easily containerized debris. And please be patient with us. Let me talk a little bit about our shelters, and then I'll ask for any questions. As you probably are aware, we started with eight shelters during Hurricane Florence. We housed over 1,400 residents. We're now down to one shelter at our Smith Recreation Center. And as of this afternoon, we had less than 50 individuals there. We've been working collaboratively with the County Red Cross Behavioral Alliance and also our Fast Folks Transit to get those remaining individuals, excuse me, either into hotels temporarily. We've identified 20 houses that some folks will be going to. Operation In As Much will be working with five residents, and then the remainder will be taken back to their homes. Again, working with Transit to help us with that transition. As we said earlier, our goal is to close the shelter by tomorrow. We also have tomorrow, the mayor and several members of council will be going to the Red Cross offices to thank the volunteers, over 150 from different cities from across the country, as far away as Alaska. Finally, Habitat. Many have heard of the Habitat Project. That was one of our projects initially on our CDBGDR list of projects. $2 million was identified. Well, that has been a back-and-forth conversation with the state, excuse me, with the governor's office, with the Department of Commerce. Thank you. And when you have three different entities, including emergency management, a lot of processes have changed, a lot of redirection. So now what we're trying to do is, the project is sitting with Hudding, Greensboro. We've reached out to our state delegation. We've also reached out to Senators Tillis and Burr to see if they can help with the situation. But in the interim, we were contacted by the Office of Budget and Management, the governor's office. They are looking at a potential different funding source for the 1.5 million now that we need for infrastructure. We are meeting with them tomorrow at 2:30, and we hope to get some new direction and moving forward with this project that would house 47 residents. So again, we're working very hard on all of these hurricane-related efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Reinstein. We do have a couple of questions, and then I needed to relay some information to the citizens also. I'm sure that I am not alone with this, but I've received numerous calls and emails and messages referenced to mosquito spraying. And just wanted to let citizens know that although the city of Fayetteville is not responsible for the mosquito spraying, the county is. We have been working together with our colleagues on the commission to find out what's going on. They have authorized three separate sprays throughout the county, the entire county. So I've gotten emails from as far as east over saying, "Don't forget us." And so, of course, Cumberland County in its entirety will be sprayed, as well as aerial sprays. And so the county commissioner is doing that. Any information that we have on that out, we'll continue to relay it to you, because you don't care who's responsible, you just want it done, I'm sure. So Councilmember Dawkins in here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to bring Sheila up. I had some specific questions for solid waste. Thank you. And while you're coming up, I wanted to, the question's going to be about FEMA. If you would first introduce yourself, tell us who you are, and then discuss why there's multiple teams that are with our contractor because of some FEMA requirements. I've been getting some complaints or seeing all these people just writing down notes. I think they're probably doing more than that.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Sheila Thomas, Interim Public Services Director. So to reiterate some of the things that Jay just talked about, I'll have some notes here and it'll hopefully help you. So this is indeed a team effort. Our staff are working in conjunction with Crowder Golf to pick up this debris. Our focus has been on containerized yard waste, and Crowder Golf has been doing non-containerized. As of this week, we have completed all of the containerized yard waste. We're up to speed on that, and so we're back to normal routes with the containerized yard waste. In addition, we will be deploying five of our yard waste trucks in order to assist Crowder Golf with their yard waste, with the non-containerized debris pickup. So we'll be using five of our trucks to optimize collections for those areas that are trailing behind in terms of picking up of the non-containerized yard waste. To give you an idea of scope in general, we pick up around 200 to 250 tons of yard waste debris in an average week, and we are now averaging more than three to four times that amount, to give you an idea of scope in terms of what we're picking up. We will be releasing a map here shortly to speak of where we've completed our runs for the first pass. So in other words, we're doing this by passes. So we hope to hit most of the city, hope to hit 80% of the city by October 24th in terms of a first pass, in terms of picking up yard waste debris and non-containerized debris. And so we'll be releasing a map here shortly, speaking to the areas that we have completed in terms of first run. So hopefully this information is what you're looking for.
So that will be online? Is that?
Yeah, so we're working on that map as we speak, and we hope to release it hopefully tomorrow or the day after.
And then our last non-containerized citizen that we pick up, their debris four weeks out?
So the goal is, the target is to pick up 80% by October 24th of the city. 80% for first pass. So in other words, what I mean by that is that if debris was not out and our trucks have already been down that road, that would be considered a second pass. So the trucks have already been down certain roads as part of the first pass, and we are hoping to pick up 80% of that by October 24th. And this map will release the roads that we've been on already.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank your team, Sheila. We appreciate it. Stay at it, work night and day.
Thank you.
Don't sleep, just drink water. And thank you.
Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a thumbs up. Sunday when my wife and I were coming home from church, we had the, quite surprised that the guys were picking up the debris on Sunday. I was sort of surprised. But they did a fabulous job. And so kudos to them, Jay. They even raked the front. So I had very little to do today. So I don't know if that was a part of the scope, but a job well done to the contractors. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And council, I have a few housekeeping items to mention. Mayor Pro Tim joins us by phone. Councilmember Moans by phone. Councilmember Chris and Jensen will not be with us this evening. And we have a very special guest on the desk, and I will let someone that may know her, Councilmember Waddell. Would you like to introduce our guest?
Absolutely. So this evening, we have joining us Ray Vialle Musser. She joins us from Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. She is a student, she's a homeschooled student, and I have the pleasure of being her principal. And I will allow Ms. Musser to give us the updates from FCYC.
So my name is Ray Vialle Musser, as she stated. I'm the secretary of the youth council and our state youth council. We first want to go over state business. We are actually about to be attending our first service learning conference on this Saturday in Rocky Mountain, where we'll be doing some service learning activities for the state of North Carolina. We also just had our Glow Fest on Saturday, and we appreciate you guys for coming out. We had over 270 runners participate in the run. 62 FCYC members were involved. We had 14 of our alumni members who have gone to college came back. And we had a pretty good turnout, so we're looking forward to seeing you guys next year, and we just want to say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for joining us. Councilmember Wright did have a question before we move.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Jay, and also about the cleanup. What percentage of cleanup have we completed thus far? I know you're trying to do 80%, but what percentage, do you have a percentage as of yet that you have accomplished? And then I want to talk to Mr. Reinstein about the Habitat Project.
That's a great question. As soon as we release the map, you'll have a good understanding of what percentage specifically we would have completed.
So you don't have an idea?
I would hate to guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reinstein, the Habitat Project on Bunce Road, that's in District 7, we've been working on that project for a while now, but it seemed like we're making some headway on that project. Can you just again repeat, how many homes would be built in this project on Bunce Road?
Forty-seven homes built.
Okay, 47. I know we recently went up to Raleigh to meet with the governor's representatives. What came out of that meeting?
Yeah, so right now, it was to look at different funding streams. We're still considering the CDBGDR dollars. Again, that is really now in HUD's hands in Greensboro, but the newest twist is the opportunity to identify some additional funding, a potential grant that the state may give us, or to Habitat for 1.3 or 1.5 million, to help with the infrastructure that's needed. That's really the last piece of the puzzle. We meet with them tomorrow and hope to have more information following tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, and if that's a good meeting, productive meeting, what is the timeline for the beginning of work on that project, if that's the case?
We will know more tomorrow, and as soon as we have that information, we'll pass that along to city council.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reinstein. As we move to recognitions, we have a proclamation or resolution proclaiming. It will be presented to Public Works. I have to go over on Wednesday to swear in one of the commissioners, and I will present it to them at that time. But it reads, "Whereas public power meets the electric needs of 40 million Americans, almost 15% of electricity consumers, whereas public power is a crucial component in over 2,000 cities and towns across America, contributing to the overall health of communities by providing reliable electricity, excellent local service, and prompt restoration. And whereas the Fayetteville Public Works provides reliable service," and I will say reliable, "electricity to over 80,000, and the largest public power city in North Carolina, and the 35th largest out of more than 2,000 public power systems in the United States. And whereas the citizens of Fayetteville and consumers and owners of their public power system exercise local control over utility operations and policies. And whereas electric system is a community asset that contributes to the well-being of the citizens by providing safe and reliable power, excellent local customer service, and economic development opportunities. And whereas the Fayetteville Public Works has earned the American Public Power Association's Diamond Level Reliable Public Power Provider RP3 Award, indicating the highest level of electric reliability. Now, it's therefore resolved, the Fayetteville City Council does hereby proclaim the week, October 7th through 13th, 2018, to be designated as Public Power Week to recognize Public Works Commission, Fayetteville's hometown utility for its contributions to the community, encourage our citizens, business, and policymakers to celebrate the many benefits provided to Fayetteville as a public power community." And so this is signed and adopted on the 8th day of October. And you all, I know, I've been one of the biggest critics in the past Public Works. I know that many people have their issues about it, but I'll tell you what, they stepped up to the plate during Hurricane Florence, and they outperformed any of their other service providers in the area. So no doubt about it. So we have to give kudos where they're due, and we will present this to Public Works coming up on Wednesday. So let's give PWC and their team and employees a round of applause. Now, we have a very special presentation to make, and I will defer to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council.
While they're going through the line, you know, I was trying to think of a pun about escaping quicksand. I was trying to do this on my way here today, but I got stuck. Quicksand and stuck, okay.
And Mayor, if I could, Jay, if you could come up front, and Mayor, if you could make your presentation. One of the things that we do very well here is we like to make sure we acknowledge people's indelible contributions to our organization and to our community. Jay Reinstein has announced that he will be taking leave a little bit later this month. And Mayor and council, this is officially his last council meeting for some time, and we could think of no better way to recognize him than to ask Mayor Kovan to present him with the bust of our namesake.
And Mayor, if I could, Jay, if you could come up front, and Mayor, if you could make
You know, Jay's a comedian, so is this a part of your?
And Jay, if you'll free to...
Jay set that up.
Wow. This was not expected. Sort of caught me off guard. I saw me on the monitor there, and I will say that it's been an amazing five years in this organization. I've loved just about every minute of it, not every minute, just about every minute. The amazing support from Doug, my team, staff. The council members have been amazing. I was not expecting this to happen at this stage in my life, but I've also, I realize that some things are meant to be, and I'm going to use this recent diagnosis that I was given with early onset Alzheimer's as an opportunity to raise awareness. There are 200,000 people like me in their 40s and 50s that are diagnosed with this disease, and we're sort of the forgotten ones. A lot of folks don't realize that it's not just me and those other 200,000, but I know the caretakers, caregivers, my wife and daughter, my parents, they're really struggling with this. As I've said before, I'm a glass-half-full kind of guy, and I'll stay positive. And Alzheimer's Association has already asked me to spend a lot of time volunteering and working on support groups and raising money and helping to lobby, but I can honestly say that this five years in Fayetteville has been amazing to me, and I just want to thank all of you for the incredible support. I'm going to miss each and every one of you. Thank you, and hope to see you down the road. So I really appreciate everything. It means a lot.
And, you know, Mr. Reinstein came shortly after we were first elected, and so it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you, sir. Just wanted to give a few facts about Mr. Reinstein. He's very modest, but it says that, as he mentioned, he's been with the city of Fayetteville for over five years, and his accomplishments have included awards from the Golden Leaf Foundation. He's a mentor and coach on numerous occasions to young professionals and students that have had an interest in working in local government. He's an advocate for Veterans Career Program that assists veterans in finding jobs after they exit the military. He along with the strong team worked tirelessly for city residents, applying for and receiving millions of dollars in grants for hazard mitigation. He's a very strong advocate for core values for the employees, the Core Value Awards, and the city has tapped into his talent for serving as numerous masters of ceremony and as a stand-up comedian, which he truly is that, even if his jokes are flat sometimes. But Jay, as he mentioned, will be retiring October 19th, and although we are sad to say farewell, we wish him the very best in the future, and his family in their future endeavors. So one more round of applause for Jay Reinstein. All right, so we'll get down to business. Council, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Arp, second by Councilmember Wright, to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Mayor Pro Tim? All right, council, Madam Clerk, that is... Mayor Pro Tim? Does that mean green? All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those that are present. Mr. Moan, are you there? All right, council, item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. It's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, a second by Councilmember Arp. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Mayor Pro Tim? Mayor Pro Tim, is that you?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, so this is to, motion to approve the consent. How do you vote?
Motion to approve.
All right. Well, so I'll take that as green. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.1, zoning commission annual report to the city council. Mr. Harmon, you've shaved or something different. What is it?
Yes, I did shave. Good evening, council.
Good to see.
Mayor, council. First, I'd like to introduce our chairman of our zoning commission. He's going to be giving the first part of the... He's going to be giving the first part of the presentation tonight, Mr. Kevin Height, if you'll come forward. Kevin has been our chairman for about two years now. So I'll let him give you a little background on this past year and then I'll take over for a little bit as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to take an opportunity as a citizen of Fayetteville to say thank you for the staff that you've either hired or retained that I've had the pleasure of working with over the years. I'm a teacher here at Terry Sanford High School, have been there 26 years. I'll be retiring in December with 31 years in. And I have brought many students over the years to City Hall in my civics class. And I just want to note, and I mentioned this to some other officials, I'd like to give you a homework assignment if I might, that state and local government gets short shrift in our civics classes. And I'd really encourage the council and city staff to work with our legislators and our school board to try to get that back in. It's important, I think, that kids understand what you do because city government impacts so much of their lives. I also want to thank Nathan Walls, Dr. Telly Whitfield, Mr. Jermaine Johnson, and the mayor for giving their time to meet with my students on Friday. Nathan and I have had many conversations over the years. He's always professional, he's always wonderful to work with, and he goes out of his way to make it a very special treat for the kids. And I also want to thank, I can't even remember all the names of the police officers that we met. We go over to what I call the TV wall in the police headquarters and the kids are always amazed. I also want to take a moment to thank you for the staff you've provided to the zoning commission, Mr. Gerald Newton, Craig, Mr. David Seinmetz, Mr. Torres Freeman, Ms. Lisa Harper, who tries to keep us out of legal problems, and Ms. Karen Estep, who diligently writes down everything we say. You've given us a very good staff to work with and I appreciate that. The zoning commission is both a quasi-judicial and legislative body, responsible for zoning issues, special use permits, appeals of an administrative decision, and variances. The commission is comprised of five regular members and two alternate members. Meetings are held the second Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. We meet tomorrow night and I also want to thank you for reappointing me to the council for the next two years. I totally enjoy what we do. We have public notification of any of the issues that come before us. They're put in the advertising in the local newspaper, the posting of information sign on each property, mailed notices to all property owners within 500 feet for rezoning and special use permits, and within 300 feet for variances and appeals. The commission holds public hearings on every case that comes before us. The commission has the authority to deny rezoning requests. If someone feels aggrieved by our decision, they have 10 days to file an appeal. If it is a rezoning or special use permit, the appeal comes to you. If it's a variance or an appeal of an administrative decision, the appeal goes to the Superior Court. In this fiscal year, we have had a total of 31 cases so far. City council's final determination reflected the commission's recommendations 93% of the time. I give that an A. The commission followed planning staff's recommendations 93% of the time. And planning staff's recommendation represented the city council's final decision 100% of the time. The Board of Adjustment was consolidated with the zoning commission in December of 2015. Since then, there have been four cases heard by the commission. Two were approved and two were denied. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Harmon to give you some examples of the types of cases we have considered.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Just wanted to real briefly go through a few of the cases that this board has approved over the last year that have gone through the complete development process. Few that you'll hopefully remember, and remember this is fiscal year, so this started in July of 2017. This is over behind the hospital, a parking lot that was approved. They've started, as you can see, there were some buildings and house on the property when you approved this. Now they've cleared the property, they haven't started paving or anything, but they've got some stormwater controls out there. They've started the process for building that parking lot. The Haymount Grill, we still get quite a few calls, what's going on with the grill. We really haven't gotten anything finalized for the grill from the owners at this point. And it's hard to tell from these photos, but during the time that y'all approved the rezoning of their property, they did get a building permit to demolition the interior of the building and that has been done at this point. If you ride by now, there's no roof on the building and it's just the brick interior walls. Everything else is gone from the building right now. Forsyth Drive, this is over behind the medical area near the hospital. You approved an area for truck parking. This is kind of specialized truck parking. This was some mobile classrooms for some specialized military contractors. They park their vehicles. They've put the fencing up, they've still got landscaping to do around the fencing, but they're just about ready to start that operation now. Rim Road, daycare that did a little expansion out in that area and you can see the bottom photo, the area in the back where they are building the expansion at the moment. E.E. Smith House, rezoning to get it ready for being redeveloped and reused by the city. See that, done a lot of exterior and interior work on that building at this point. 505 Middle Road, Horn Brothers, they've started clearing the property. It's a little hard to tell from the photos, but they've cleared off the property to get it prepped for their operation. And then last but not least, our baseball stadium. And that's probably the one project that's furthest along over the last year. If you don't have any questions, I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman to finish us out.
Members of council, at this time, it's my pleasure to request an action for a motion to accept this report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Height. There's a motion by Councilmember Wright to accept the report as presented, second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Mayor Pro Tim? Madam Clerk, that's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 7.02 is the Ethics Commission Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Ethics Commission, Mr. David Bach, and he'll do the presentation this evening for our Ethics Commission. Mr. Bach?
Mr. Mayor, council. My name is David Bach and I am the Chairman of the Ethics Commission, along with Joseph Levestre, Dale Knowles, Bob Cogswell, who is the attorney for the commission, Carol Jones, and I forgot one more. I'll get to it in a second. Mr. Mayor, as you know, the Ethics Commission meets on the third Monday of every month if we have something to discuss. This is a council-appointed commission, Mr. Mayor, and as you know, the ethics code was revised and adopted by the city council back in 2014. And it is, the whole purpose of the Ethics Commission was to foster the trust and confidence of the public in this council and our city government. As the mayor knows, the purpose of the commission is to investigate complaints, render advisory opinions, hear complaints, publish findings and recommendations regarding alleged violations of the city's code of ethics by employees, board, or commission members, and/or appointed or elected officials. We have five volunteer members, as I indicated, and these are old members here, and those are not right. But I will tell you that in the last year, knock on wood, we have not had to make any decisions at all, and those decisions were tabled by this council. So therefore, I have really nothing to report for this year. We had two complaints come to us, but again, they were resolved without us having to render an opinion. Mr. Mayor, that is my report and I would tender a motion to you to approve this report.
Thank you, sir. Well, I guess no news is good news in that case.
That's exactly right.
All right. So council, any questions from Mr. Bach or would you all like to entertain a motion at this time to accept it?
Motion to receive and approve the report.
Sir, okay, so I got a lot of seconds, right? So I got a motion by Councilmember Arp, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for votes. Mayor Pro Tim?
Forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that motion is unanimous by all those present. This time, move to the public forum. Public forum, this is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, we ask that you may reserve your comments until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light that's located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have 30 seconds to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. Mayor, we have seven speakers for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Maria Gonzalez.
My name is Maria Gonzalez. I reside at 1234 Bombay Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Cedar Falls Locks Creek subdivision.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you pull the mic down so we can hear you?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here to represent the Cedar Falls Locks Creek subdivision. I'm speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors and some of them will also speak this evening. Our concerns are the flooding that we endured during Hurricane Matthew, which today is our two-year anniversary, and of course Florence. We have a lot of concerns. Since I've moved to the neighborhood back in 2013, I have watched developers build on what used to be ponds, and since then, there has been flooding, whether it be hurricane or just a regular downpour. And we're concerned that nothing is being done about it and we want the city to tell us what they're going to do for us. And really, we want, we want out. We can't endure the financial, the emotional stress that we're all under due to this. And I've passed out some photos so that you could see what has happened to us in the last two years and even before that, actually, in 2015 and now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Kim Butch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and everyone here this evening. My name is Kim Butch and I reside at 1230 Bombay Drive. I'm here representing myself, my neighbors, and the other residents of the Cedar Falls and Locks Creek area. I could go into detail with just my story of being a single mom of five that went back to school to become a nurse and just to support us and how I purchased my first home on Bombay Drive using the North Carolina Down Payment Assistance Program in August of 2015, only to have our home that I worked very hard for be flooded not once, but twice in 23 months. But you know what? This room is filled with stories of people that have worked voraciously for what they have and they've, stories of their own, of living in Locks Creek prior to the massive development that has happened out there. What is unacceptable is that we are having to overcome dealing with now a second flooding. It's not right that we should be so spent financially, emotionally, and mentally due to negligence and decisions made by others. When each of you came to office, you accepted your position to make a change and to better the lives of everyone in Fayetteville, even those of us that are east of the Cape Fear River. You accepted your position and all that came with it, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Your predecessors made many decisions that you now to get to reap from. The decisions made pertaining to the development of the Locks Creek area may have been good for some, but for those of us that live there and now for you, it is the bad and the ugly. The filling of much of that area and subsequent development of streets and homes without proper and adequate drainage must be rectified. And we're looking to you and not for just the worded answers, but for follow-through. We know that you have begun working on this, our dire situation, and we thank you for bringing staffers that came and spoke to us. But don't stop because we won't stay quiet this time. We can't afford to. Continue to utilize every avenue and resource available to fix this problem for all of us. And I hope and I pray that that will take place before we have to be evacuated for a third or a fourth time. Many of us would prefer to no longer live there and we don't want to run that risk. Our homes are no longer an investment and a joy to us, they are a liability. This is a man-made problem that requires a man-made solution. Let the images that you've seen here tonight, that you saw at the last city council meeting, that you saw in all the news coverage, let those stay with you until the solution comes to fruition. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kenyatta Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor Kovan and members of the council and everybody in this room, the people that are here with us. Will you please just stand for a brief second in our neighborhood? All right, thank you. More or less, we're not here to ask for anything but some help and some guidance. We are aware that you are the people that are capable of making things happen. We do appreciate your effort and help to have people come to our neighborhood and speak and also to have us speak here and openly express our feelings and situation. October 8th this year, about two years ago, is the anniversary. I walked out of my home with my daughter on my neck against about five and a half to six foot of water. And as you can see, I'm not really a tall guy, but just getting her to a place of safety and higher ground was the only thing that was on my mind. Just like Kim said, this is not really the experience that I expected, but we are here and. but we are here, and we have to solve the solution. We just like a little guidance and a little assistance on where we need to go and how we need to take care of the situation. A hundred-year flood is understandable, God has his works, but a two-year situation and financially recouping from the first is something that has a weight on everybody personally and as a group. We love our area, we love the city of Fayetteville, that's why we decided to purchase homes here. And when I look out and I see my tree line, and I look at my house and I pull up, it kind of saddens me for the fact that every time I look at a raindrop, I might get a little upset, and my daughter, I have to explain to her it's going to be all right. So again, we do appreciate your assistance. We're not here to do anything but express the concern. And I appreciate everything that you do for us time to time and month to month and year to year. I don't think that I'm speaking too aggressively, and I don't think I'm speaking too softly. I think everything is balanced, and all we want is balance on the scales of right and wrong as far as righting the situation. Now, I'm quite sure that you all don't have all the answers and the solutions, but I'm pretty adamant in figuring out that you know which route we should go from this point, and we come to you for that. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'm a pretty simple man, but we're in a complicated situation. And so as a team, I think we can resolve all of this efficiently as possible before the next hurricane. And speaking of such, we got one on the coast right now, so I don't even know if we, where to go, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. And even though it's our policy not to respond, we will have staff members get your information, your contact for follow-up. So we're hearing you, okay, all right. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Ivy Dow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ivy Melvin Dow. I've come before you today concerning my property on 2219 L.A. Dunham, which is adjacent to the Locks Creek community. I'm coming before you because of the canal that is at the back of my property. It's a large canal that's increasing with the width and the depth. It's eroding and encroaching on the property. I have spoken with Mr. Miller at the Soil and Water Department about this problem, because whenever it rains, rains heavily, the water embreeches the bank and spill over into my backyard. Before the storm, I talked to Mr. Miller, and I talked to him about the conditions and the maintenance of this canal. And he told me that the canal runs partly in the city and in the county. It's about two and a half miles long, and it runs into the Cape Fear River. And I had great concerns about this before the storm, after Matthew, and now Florence. But he told me that there's no funding to maintain, to do this. So that's a big concern of mine, because you know, with the hair claim Florence, and it left three feet of water in the property each time with Florence and Matthews. Therefore, I'm asking if there's any fund for a buyout that you consider myself and any other person in this condition. Thank you.
Mr. Charles Matthews?
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, I'm the mayor and I'm the city councilor. I live at 3618 Tenon Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. Is it on?
We see it, sir.
Okay, where do all this water come from? Now I said. Little River, Texas Pond, Smith Lake, Rosa Lake, Rosa Lake. Where do it go? Big Cross Creek. Location? Rosa Lake Dam. I must say, I'm very sorry for the devastation from the flooding of Big Cross Creek prior to Cape Fear River flooding. As Mr. John Jones stated, this was an act of God. I agree, the storm was an act of God, but the flooding of Big Cross Creek shouldn't have happened. Big Cross Creek never flooded prior to 1989. Once Rosa Lake Dam was breached, flooding began. Mr. Mick Nolan had PWC to open and the crew to illegally destroy Rosa Lake riser and breach its dam. I request the City Attorney's Office to investigate this matter and solve this major problem. There are other complaints that permits he should have had and didn't have, and some more things I must say about PWC, they are good and some are bad. I won't state them right now. Since FEMA is involved and this become federal, and so we know there's no limitation on federal. Rosa Lake must and should become a water reservoir again. Its dam must be replaced with water control riser. Then we can control the water in Big Cross Creek as we did before it was breached. I talked with many of you that live in the vicinity and have business in the vicinity of Big Cross Creek after Hurricane Matthew about the solution. Now global warming is causing more storms. There have been 26 100- to 500-year storms in the past decade. Now we must be on the lookout for MICA. It doesn't take a hurricane to flood Big Cross Creek out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Channing Perdue.
Hi, my name is Channing Perdue. I live at 1531 Cedar Creek Road. I am also here representing the people in the room from Locks Creek and Cedar Creek Falls. We are approximately a half a mile from a finger creek that is off of Locks Creek. Apologize for my baby. And our farm, we have 10 acres, and our farm was flooded in three feet of water from 10:00 PM Sunday evening to Monday, or excuse me, Saturday evening to 6:00 AM Saturday morning. We had to evacuate all of our farm animals, our livestock guardian dogs, and our personal pets. We were also in the mandatory evacuation zone. I also spoke with Mitch Miller over at Soil and Water Conservation, and he did also confirm that the funding is not there. He did have a meeting last week with the state Soil and Water Conservation going up and down the creeks, not just Locks Creek and Cedar Creek, but several other creeks in the county. I do have a map that shows from Matthew the areas that were flooded back then, and only a small portion of it was done. There's approximately 70,975 feet of creek, roughly 13.4 miles. And only a small portion of that was cleaned out during Hurricane Matthew. So I'm also working with Soil and Water Conservation, the USDA, and finding out where the funding is coming. It is coming from FEMA, and I know funding is coming, but for the families and the other people, the other farmers that are affected, that doesn't help us get the money back. FEMA has denied us our claims for flood, for fixing our barn and our chicken coop. We have no funding, nothing from USDA either, because of all the creeks and stuff that came and flooded our farm. I'm a mom of four, and I hate to be emotional, but to evacuate my entire family and our farm was incredibly upsetting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Michael Harrison.
Good evening, everybody. I want to say my name is Michael Harrison. I live at 1207 Jerrance Creek Road in the Locks Creek subdivision. And I just want to say, thank everybody for coming out, showing support, and let you know these people are very concerned about their homes. And at the same time, each time you do something like this, you put yourself in that person's position. How would y'all feel if y'all were living in the circumstances these people living in? We're not talking about $20,000 homes, we're talking about 150,000 to $200,000 homes flooded two times within a two-year period. And I bought my home brand new in 2008, and it never flooded like this until the developer came in, took out retaining ponds, moved sewer systems around to make room for another house. Ever since then, we've been struggling. I mean, our neighborhood right now, even though whatever you may do, buyout, whatever, it still needs major work. We only had one way in, one way out, okay? The front of the neighborhood flood, we trapped back there, can't get out for four or five days. Nobody comes to see about nobody. If you put new sewer system in, pipe work, whatever, you need to put an exit out the back of the neighborhood. That way, people can evacuate out the back. And my thing is, senators, I understand, called from Washington, came down about this matter, and not one time did I see anybody from City Council come down to our neighborhood to see how we're doing, to see what we could do to better this problem. And from this day forward, like y'all said up there about the great American city, I'm leaving it in y'all's hands to see where we go from here.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for coming in tonight and sharing that. And I mean, please note that the City Council is aggressively working to do what we can. The way that the process works, you know, the money has to flow from the feds through the state, and then we have to petition the state. But what we did the last time, we learned some lessons from 2016 with Matthew. And so staff has learned how to expedite that process so that we can, you know, get some revisions. One of the things that we're advocating for right now is the statute, the state statute limits us as to the things that we can do in areas that are not on the flood map as being shown as flood areas. And so we are working to try to get them to update the 2007 map. We had meetings the other day, and we're advocating to get them to hurry up and turn that around, and that'll empower us to be able to make more decisions locally. But we hear you, but you know, we just have some restrictions. And so please note that your council is working hard to figure out how we can help you through this process. We do have some staff members that are available. Want to make sure that they have your points of contact. And there are some other programs, I talked to some other folks earlier today, some nonprofits and some other folks that are applying for some resources and grants. So we have not forgotten you, and you know, we definitely in our prayers, okay? All right, Madam Clerk, is that, that's the last speaker? All right, so at this time, that ends the public forum. So council, I'll look to you for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, ma'am.